Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Seniority School Board of Education meeting of January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight is our first meeting in January, which is our organizational meeting. So, our first quarter of business is election of board officers for this 2020 year. This year, our policy states we need to use a ballot. And I was questioned by another board member. We did do this last year, and I said, every year I've been on this board for eleven years, it's been a different process. So, this year, we're going to follow a process and continue to follow a process. So, we will use a ballot. We'll start with President, and then we'll do Vice President and Secretary. The process will be that you may nominate yourself. You may nominate another board member. If you nominate another board member, that member must accept the petition for the nomination. We'll vote, pass them down to Mrs. Walts. She will tabulate, and then let us know the results of the...
No speeches? No lobbying? No?
Mm-hmm. No, not this year. So, I will nominate Heidi Fannus for President. Ms. Fannus, would you accept that?
I would accept that.
Any other nominations for President? No? So, please, mark your ballot.
Where's my ballot? Oh. Gotta get out here, girls. Let me...
You're slacking off down there.
We take the two highest voted and we vote.
How do you get a four-three tie? You have fifty, you have three to you.
Heidi didn't make it. She could run for another office, so...
Seven-zero.
Seven-zero, Heidi. Congratulations, Heidi.
We get to still continue.
Yes.
Good.
Our end of this...
Good.
Vice President, any nominations?
I'd like to throw my own name into Vice President.
Mr. McBay?
Paul Ellen. She would like to...
I would like to nominate Tim Austin.
I'm gonna respectfully decline. I will nominate Paul.
So, we have myself, Mr. McBay, and...
Would you accept?
Oh, I did accept, sorry. And Trustee Stebbin. Any other nominations for Vice President? Please vote. Trustee Stebbin. So, I guess I will be Vice President.
Can I have a voice?
Nomination for Secretary.
Okay, go ahead.
I was gonna say I'm gonna throw my own name in again and continue to do the job. Having a lot of fun with Mr. McBay.
I was gonna nominate myself for that one.
Tim?
I would like to also nominate Susan.
I'll accept. Thank you.
Dennis, that leaves you if you'd like to... Please vote. Thank you. I made it look... I made something... Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So, Mr. Austin has three votes. Susan has two votes. Michael won, and Jennifer won. So, Mr. Austin will be our Secretary this year. Can I have a motion, please, to adjourn the organizational meeting of January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty at six-thirty-eight P.M.? Remove. All those in favor who can say with a "aye." Those opposed, nay. During non-motion period, seven zero. And we'll switch seats.
Come on in to do this.
Okay. Congratulations.
I get the cards. Do I go over there or stay here? I can stay here.
Stay here for lunch.
All right. Then, I would like to call the meeting to order at... I don't have my glasses on. Six-thirty-eight. Um... Oh. Forgive me, we have to learn this. So, all right, so, um, we're going to... I can't read. Okay. A member of the public may address the Board briefly for up to three minutes by filling out the how-to address the Board of Education form, which we have some gathered, that is provided prior to each meeting. Please note, the Board of Education members will not respond directly to the public comment. Public comment will be limited to thirty minutes. Those needing additional time should request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting via the superintendent. Individuals addressing the Board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against board member, district employee, community member, or student. So, Lisa Slosson.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I want to say congratulations to you, Heidi, because the last time this Board had female president was in 2012, and that was me. So, I cannot thank you enough for taking on this. This is a great opportunity, and you'll do an amazing job. I also want to talk about the four-year terms, because I was on the Board when we did that. And it was a lot of matter of finances, and we really didn't know how it would turn out. And I think that, at a time in the recent past, we had a Board where almost a majority of those people were appointed. And I'm not really sure if that's ever representative of our community and their right to vote. So, I think that four years is better. You know, people move. Their kids grow up. People die. People get sick. People just get sick and tired of sitting up here, you know, having to, you know, constantly be barraged with things, you know. I get it. So, I think that's an absolutely good thing to do for the community. So, thank you. Congratulations, Heidi, again. Thanks a lot.
Tiffany Alexander.
So, congratulations, everybody. I'm here. So, I apologize, but again, I am in a situation where I just recently found out about this for like five minutes. So, it's my understanding that retirees supporting adults who contribute to the community of high school were removed due to some complaints. My daughter is supposed to start at high school next year. Definitely gives me pause. I'm rather not inclined to do that or just start shopping for private schools. I also understand that there is a group now in middle school, which I'm clear of, called All Means All, or All Means All Group at middle school, which is apparently there's complaints about that, and how you can possibly complain about everybody should be included. That gives me the opportunity to say that I am tired of facade, that there is some source concern that these children are dangerous. There is not one bit of evidence that supports that. Zero silch, and they think it's not real. It's pretend. If you're so concerned about some other human being sharing your presence, then you need to pull your child out of that presence. Whatever your, like they talk about their religious rights, their religious rights do not... You don't have the right to use those to exclude somebody else. That was done against black people in the past. They literally said, "God intended for blacks and whites to be kept separate." If somebody came up here and made that argument today, not one person would tolerate it. Not one person would sit there and say, "Yes, that's okay." No one. This is not okay either. These are children, none of them, they are black, whether they are gay, whether they are trans. The only people adverse are these children. They're the ones who are committing suicide. It's been stated before that schools should be held hostage by threats of suicide. That's literally... That isn't what I...
What is it?
That's literally telling you, "Don't worry about it. These kids kill themselves." I'm tired of people faking it, that these people care about these children. They do not. They do not. If your religion is offended by the existence of another human being in your presence, then you need to remove yourself. Some years ago, they would make the same arguments against gay people. Now, that's not acceptable. Now, that's something that, you know, it's tabooed. So, guess what? Now, they've picked a new group. That's why there are some of our rights, because people aren't willing to stand up. When is enough enough? When are we gonna stop pretending that hatred is not what it is? When are we gonna start calling it out? And when are people who are saying, "No, I'm okay with this," going to admit that I'm okay with this, regardless to where you sit? Thank you very much.
Darcy Burwick.
I just wanted to say that I was over at the middle school and took a picture of the All Means All. It's really cool. I had seen it up before without any display in it. Steve Custom finds that a really nice job. It looks fantastic. It's very sleek and lets them all have their work. And it was cute. I know those kids worked really hard on it, and I know that they were working on the Christmas misty class at the high school to put that together. So, it was great. We haven't had a chance to see how it popped in. I know that it's been switched out for Black History Month, and I know they've got a couple more games planned for the rest of the year, but it's just that it was super cute and it worked really good and sleek and...
Okay. So, administration, do you have any...
Yeah, just wanted to touch base relative to the calendar. A lot of people have been asking as we get to the... We do have a calendar. It will be posted live, I believe, soon, tomorrow. August thirty-first will be our first day with students. That is consistent with this current year in terms of it's the Monday before Wednesday. Of note, Washmont County has recently entered into the process of getting a waiver from the state, so Washmont County would have the waiver. Based on conversation with other superintendent, it appears that seven of the nine districts will be starting on August thirty-first. If you recall, three years ago, when we were going through this process, we talked about, does this make sense? It certainly felt like we were a forerunner. We were against it. It's very likely that seven of the nine school districts in Michigan or in Washmont County will be starting on the thirty-first. Because it's about a week later than we started this year, regardless of the location of Labor Day, it does mean we're likely to get out on June nineteenth next year. So, again, the calendar reposted, families can start to plan effectively with that. It's in cooperation and support of the ESEA for getting that calendar together. We do have on the agenda, depending on how long the meeting goes, some representative from the ESP there. I know Bob Reader here, who represents Transportation Department, and, you know, we are entering into, while it's been a mild, relatively mild winter so far, I would like to give a shout out to Allen. Our Maintenance Department has been active over the weekend. Our Transportation Department, as I said, is doing a really challenging time of year. We expect a lot out of our employees, all of them. We expect a great deal out of our maintenance and the transportation staff in the months of November, December, particularly January, February, March. These are challenging times for all of us, and we really do need to provide a safe environment for our students, and they do an outstanding job of doing that. So, again, I appreciate all their support in the year night, so again, I appreciate them, not only attending tonight, but certainly all the work they do as a school district. Last thing, I would like to note, we also are working with our administrative team, our administrative team, and we have a potential to act at an agreement with our Administrative Association. Administrative Association has been, at least in contract terms divided over the course of my tenure, which, which dates twenty-plus years, and ultimately are coming together. And really, I think it's the understanding that the leaders in our community and the leaders in our school district have the same level of expectation for all of the leaders. And I applaud the leadership of SASSA in terms of being inclusive of all the directors in the union, and expecting the same level of performance out of it, and maybe stepping past some antiquated approaches to what is expected. Leaders are leaders, and again, I appreciate their support in moving forward in that direction. So, going after you.
Other board members, comments from administration or your forums?
Hello. So, we had our organizational meeting for the CQC Committee last week. It was a committee that I sat on for this past year. Tim sat on it the year before. It was chaired by SPD this past year, 2019. It's gonna be chaired by Community Education this year. I know that Nell is taking it over. So, we talked a little bit about shorting the times they were hour-and-a-half meetings in midday, they're gonna go to an hour. And we also talked about possible agenda changes for the rest of the year, including our consortium and the new employee we have there, the library, the 109 cultural exchange, and things like that. So, it's good, and I come forward, Heidi, to the public panel to come up today and all the details we want to share.
Is that first the date?
Yes, and all the calendar invites everything. And it's very...
All of it.
All of the calendar invites. One other quick thing, Spring Craft Show is coming up, and Cheryl Huff is organizing and needs a little bit of help with the gift baskets that go to, are donated to the community area social services. I told her I would help with one basket, so you can expect a follow-up email. I'm gonna use one of the four Cs as the theme for the basket.
Other...
Yes. I just want to say, I don't know, I know Mrs. Washington's here. I wanted to thank Mrs. Washington and Mr. Spicer for letting me use their fifth-grade class. They created little beautiful dioramas, and my job was to pop a 360-degree camera right in the middle of it and create a photo sphere so you could actually live right inside the diorama. I thought it was a pretty good idea, and then Mrs. Washington tweeted, you know, that I should... Ordered me to basically tweet it, so...
That would be more of a chant, like tweet it.
She was very excited by the project, and I was too. It turned out really well. What was the highlight was the kids figured out how to avoid the ceiling tiles by bringing a piece of blue butcher paper and putting it on the top. Suddenly, we had a sky. Suddenly, we had an immersive experience. One of my colleagues in Discovery Education is going to take some of these, put it into a program called Coastpaces.edu, where kids could wear virtual goggles and actually walk around inside their own diorama, which is, well, just blows my mind. Where was that when I was in high school, or fifth grade? I also wanted to say, I attended the first Goal One meeting last night at the middle school. Assistant Lieutenant Voss was running it, and I'm gonna thank him for organizing that. Did about twelve, fourteen parents, community members show up, which was great. And the last thing I want to say is, on February fourth, I'm gonna be visiting Washington, DC, thanks to the generosity of this district and the National School Boards Association, help lobby, and the offices of Congressman Dingle, Wahlberg, and Senators Stabenow and Peters, which will be really interesting, because that also is the day of the State of the Union. So, they're all gonna be in town. They'll all be there. They don't want to miss that photo up. So, I might actually be able to see something, certainly more than a legislative aide who's barely 26-years-old, and actually meet the Congressman or Senator themselves. We're gonna be addressing issues such as retention of teachers, full funding pursuits with disabilities, again, this is a perennial issue, safe schools initiatives, bridging the digital divide, and 21st century life skills. So, I'm also looking forward to hearing from community members if you could write to me if there's anything in particular that you think that I might be able to bring to the table in our discussions with Congress or with our representatives. Please let me know. That goes for anyone on the Board, anyone who's picking this up on Facebook or anywhere else. And I think that's it, I mean.
Any others?
I'll mention, you know, Jennifer, Dennis, and I, we attended the Goal Number Four. Miranda was there, kind of running that, and then Scott stepped in a lot. It was kind of amazing, kind of watching the people in the Board or in the committee, hearing how the finances work here in the school and the complexity of complicated... How complicated the financing is, and their expressions were kind of... So, anyways, a lot of good ideas, though, I think, will come out of that.
Right. And also attending it, I'd like to thank the community members for coming out for an evening and spending their time and giving us input. So, thank you. Yeah.
Yes, can you tell us about what's going on at the high school?
Yeah, well, students are obviously excited to be back. A little bit antsy, of course, last week especially, but we're starting to settle down, and testing has begun again. I know that the juniors are feeling it a little bit with that SAT coming up shortly, though it feels far away now. It won't in a couple weeks. And then for the seniors, seeing that 20 at the end of their date, kind of, it's interesting to see the reactions from a lot of my friends. Some of them are kind of disappointed that, you know, they're gonna be moving on, they're gonna have things to do, but many of them are excited to kind of see what else is out here besides Celine High School.
I had a foundation meeting this morning, and I'm not gonna spill the beans on all the cool things that they did, but they had grants that they approved, and at our next board meeting, they'll be kind of highlighting what those grants are. So, pretty cool. The support that the foundation gives the district is amazing, especially with some of the comments about, I didn't know how much really there was in a school budget for actual curriculum sort of stuff, and how the foundation is a really critical piece to, you know, that innovation and stuff. And I think that's important to realize that they play a very important part in what we can do with our teachers. So, um, let's see. Scheduled reports. Oh, wait, revisions. Okay. Is there a recommended motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Second tent.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Now, the scheduled reports.
I'm up for scheduled reports. Presentation, presentation is probably maybe a little bit of an overblown term. I would like to note, each of the board members received tonight a package from the Frank Riewalt organization we work with that actually is doing some work with the district, and a gift bag. And really, that gift bag is representative of the fact that January is the name of Google, which is good. January is School Board Appreciation Month, and, you know, having been in this position now for twelve years and having served with in excess of now 50 school board members, I will tell you, the district and any community in Michigan, certainly across the country, really, the ability for their students to have the access to the education they need to have, the advocates for student success is really predicated on having a Board of Education that is focused on the trustee model. And if you look at the definition of the word trustee, it really is a caretaker. And, you know, I think the board members that we have had in Celine and the board members we have now in Celine embody the concept of a caretaker. And it's not about necessarily pushing any specific agenda, it's about taking care of the students and the community that we have. And I think, given the current times we're in, it's not an easy job. Certainly, at $30 a meeting, it is considered to me a volunteer position, given the amount of time spent. And I did put something out earlier this evening around six o'clock, really talking a little bit more about that, but I do want to thank each and every one of you for the work you do for Celine Area Schools. This is not an easy job. This is truly a thankless position. However, we need individuals like yourselves who are willing to serve and willing to care about the future of Celine Area Schools, care about the students and our community to be successful. So, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you all, everyone. Action items. Recommended motion. Would somebody like to move to appoint the Board's Recording Secretary, Patty Walts? Tim, thank you. Tim Austin and Superintendent Grayden to serve as the Board's designees for posting legal notices.
Good work.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Recommended, would somebody like to recommend a motion to approve the 2020 Board of Education meeting schedule as submitted by Superintendent Grayden?
So moved.
Do you want me to describe anything?
No comments other than, of note, the, we will have the traditional second and fourth Tuesday of the month.
I'd like to ask, in the past, my first year here, we had one meeting at the middle school, and it was kind of fun. Are we ever gonna shake that up?
That will be predicated on incoming board presence, location, determination, but we'll set dates tonight, and I think we may have a conversation.
Okay, all... All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve Superintendent Grayden's evaluation as submitted by the Board of Education?
So moved.
Would you like to talk about that?
I will talk about that. On December tenth, we held a closed session with Superintendent Grayden and the Board, and we went through the Michigan Association of School Board Standard Evaluation Document, which is one of them that is approved by state law, and Superintendent Grayden came out as defective, which was, I don't think any surprise to anyone. Moved up two points on the scale from the prior year. We also appreciate everything you do for the district, and good job. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries, seven-zero. Recommended motion to approve the revision... Whoops, right. Recommended motion to approve Barry Livesey and Chris Michalek to be the Celine Area Schools representatives and the local development finance authority for the city of Celine as recommended by Superintendent Grayden.
So moved.
Support. Just note...
Okay, all, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve Superintendent Grayden's evaluation as submitted by the Board of Education?
So moved.
Would you like to talk about that?
I will talk about it. On December 10th, we held a closed session with Superintendent Grayden and the board and we went through the Michigan Association of School Board Standard Evaluation Document, which is one of them that is approved by state law. And Superintendent Grayden came out as defective, which was, I don't think any surprise to anyone. Moved up two points on the scale from the prior year. We also appreciate everything you do for the district and, good job.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries, seven to zero. Recommended motion to approve the revision, whoops, right. Recommended motion to approve Barry Livesey and Chris Michalek to be the Saline Area Schools' representatives in the local development finance authority for the city of Saline as recommended by Superintendent Grayden.
So moved.
Just note, both have served in the LDFA for several years, but the long standing community members have somewhat of a finance background and continue to serve as well. And frankly, both are willing to continue to serve.
That's an important part too. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries, seven to zero. Recommended motion to approve the revisions to policy 142.3 term limits as submitted by trustee Heineck. Would you like to?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, now would you like to?
Sure. So, as we discussed at the last meeting, we are wishing to change back to four-year board terms. So, in the current cycle, there are three seats up this year in 2020. One of those seats will remain a six-year term, the other two will be four-year terms, and then from that point forward, everyone will be four years. So we'll eventually get to a four-three every second year cycle. To note, as Ms. Slossen indicated in the unofficial Facebook poll started by Mr. Prigric, every former board member voted for four-year terms. So, I'm not sure if that carries a lot of weight, but something to be said for that. So, I personally got a few context encouraging the four-year. I don't know what everyone else heard from there.
I had some conversations in the community and I appreciated some folks on the board that I also reached out to to get a little historical perspective and information.
In the few years I've been on the board, I think it's come up three times at least in different board retreats and stuff, it's right after, pretty much right after it got changed to six-year terms. They started talking about changing to back to four.
I do have a comment. Prior to the meeting, the agenda had said that it was submitted, and I know Patty changed it, thank you, that it was submitted by the Board Policy Committee, including the next one, which is F, I believe. So those never, those never came through the Board Policy Committee, so I just want to point that out. But the process, yeah.
Appreciate the catch and we was quickly rectified. Yeah, I've been hearing a lot of comments about this and I know this poll, a lot of folks are in favor, but all I know is they're in favor of four-year terms and it took a lot of digging through the comments to find out what the actual reasons were. And there are three that seem to come up regularly. One of it is that six years limits the number of potential candidates, and I know I spoke about this before, I was voted by Sean K. Dalton at some time, who's in the audience who, we had six candidates for two positions last year, last time, and I think that was , it was fine. The more the merrier approach is, I know, I've seen the Democratic platform on the debate stage, I think merrier isn't exactly the right word, to see so many people vying for so few positions. So, I'm not sure that holds water with me. I've heard from Trina Ronmore that it's undemocratic that we have appointees. We've been having appointees for years in order to, which they got, Ms. Slossen made a very good comment, we shouldn't really turn it directly on the person in the audience, but that if we have too many appointees, it could sway us a little bit in one direction or another. But in the past, we've had appointees and almost all of them have gone up for reelection again, or election to be properly elected, and that's when the voice of the people came true. We, I believe Paul was elected, Heidi Dennis was elected in that respect, Dennis was elected that way, and some were not. Scott Hummel, for example, and Alan Brilliant, both were, you know, the people voted not to reelect. So, democracy wasn't crushed by this. And the last thing is that, the idea is that it was too long a term, and again, I don't buy that either. There's none of us up here who's saying, I'm going to just stay for three years and hit the eject button, or at least they're certainly not telling us. When I signed up for a six-year term, I'm in it for the whole thing and I'm again for another six-year term with no intention of dropping out. So, the idea that we could leave at any time seems a little disingenuous, but I understand the arguments, that things come up and if you really can't stay for the whole six-term, six-year term, you don't plan on it, you shouldn't be running. I suppose that's my, those are my two cents. I've been shooing away this for quite a long time, obviously, and if we vote for four-year terms, hey, that's great, I'll go with what's called democracy, but I'm going to vote for a six-year term.
I'm going to add to that, one of the things that I've been thinking about is the fact that it'll be four, turning over at once.
Big turn.
And so that was some, yeah, so that really stood out to me and just a concern with that. So I think there would be, on our part, have to be more intentional. I know we're going to go over the board operations, so I think that'll be helpful just to kind of, you know, get that information transferred over. Similar to you three who are, you know, possibly maybe on the board next year or not, we need that information transferred. So, that was something to consider.
Like, if someone serves a four-year term, they're probably more likely to run again for a second year form, four-year term to make a total of eight years instead of, instead of two, six years, it's 12 years. I mean, it does depend on the person. And to the appointee thing, I mean, we had, all of those were down illness.
Two, right.
Tightened, pretty, actually. So, those kind of situations you can never recover from, but state law also says they can't, there cannot be another election until the regular two-year cycle. So, the timing of it all is a little bit iffy as well, right?
Heidi, I got a comment. So, I read through all the community comments as well as had additional conversations. Somebody had offered the suggestion of two-year terms, and I just wanted to clarify, state law says it needs to be four or six, so that's why we're discussing this. My general comment, and I agree with Michael, I sign up for six, I'll serve six or more, hopefully not less with any medical or anything like that, as it has come up in the past. What I would say is the timing for me on this, because it was the holiday and the schools were closed down, I don't want to devalue the public interest in something like this. And so, in the future, ready to vote tonight, no problem, but in the future when we have something I think that involves the public a lot like this does, because they are the voters, it would be nice to have a little extra time and maybe have a community conversation or a special forum where a few representatives from the board or the officers could be there to kind of have a conversation with the community about it in a more structured way than just Facebook, because I know not everyone has Facebook and everyone who votes in the district should have the opportunity to have that one.
Any other comments?
I have just a quick comment. Just from a historical context to note, we have had historically, we had historically four-year terms as a community, virtually every Michigan public school did. And we had annual elections and they were conducted by the school. The process of consolidating elections and every other year elections was not dictated by a public school. That was thrust upon local school boards and this controversy and/or decision about four to six-year terms was thrust upon school boards, not by school board or school legislation. And so, you know, again, I do feel like this is something that we're grappling with and there are nuances to four- and six-year terms. Had we had the opportunity to decide for ourselves, the idea of annual elections and four-year terms, that served our democracy in my mind, in my personal opinion, and that was taken away from us by the legislature. So, just, we did not do this to ourselves. I think this was done to us and now we're reacting to it and trying to make the best of it we got. It needs to be noted.
Well, and personally, I feel like a four-year term is reasonable. A six-year term, although, you know, it's nice for consistency, it's also a very long time and it's hard to get people to do two-six-year terms. And when you look at other branches of government and stuff like that, six-year term is not normal. And so for, you know, to actual, I think four years is reasonable, I think it's, you know, allows people to continue on if they want to, but it allows people to honor their four-year commitment and, you know, move away if they want to without having to feel like I'm resigning from something that I committed to and now it's really not working out for me. You know, I think four years is a much better, easier thing for people to tolerate. So, any other comments?
Yeah, I would favor the four-year term. Being part of a six-year term right now myself, as well as serving about a year and a half to two years prior to that. I think when I ran, there were three people that ran for two spots. And while I know the last election cycle we had more interest, I think just anecdotally just that there would be more interest if we switched to a four-year term. You don't know what you're getting into. People may be more interested in applying for it if it was a four-year term.
So we'll have 12 people instead of, for two spots instead of six.
Well, and when I ran, I was unopposed. So, you know, the fact that we had more this last time was wonderful.
But I found that to be an anomaly. I want to encourage more participation, but I think a four-year term would encourage.
I think we all can encourage participation.
So this says, like, approve revisions, so are we voting to, because we're doing a resolution, correct? Are we voting for a resolution or?
We're voting for to change our policy.
Change the policy.
And then comment on that, other attachment with any file?
Resolution, the resolution we filed after we changed our policy with the county clerk.
Okay. And this does not need to go through policy committee? No.
Can I just ask, historically, since I just have the one here under my belt, why would that go through the policy?
I will note, back historically, when this first came through, when the change was made, and not to use the term committee of the whole committee to talk about, but because it impacted everyone right from the start and because it was thrust upon us, it was done in a similar fashion. So, board terms, for whatever reason, just hasn't had a lot of conversation at the policy level, it's always come right to the board. Twice, always twice, and now.
Okay, all those in favor to, let's see.
To approve the revisions is a.
Okay, revisions to make it a four-year term, right? Okay. Approve, I would like to have somebody, would somebody like to recommend a motion to approve the revision to policy 142.3 term limits as submitted by trustee Heineck, which is to four-year terms?
Paul already motioned that. I seconded it, so now we don't get approval.
Sorry. We'll get there eventually, people, sorry. Okay.
We want to get it right, it's okay.
Yes, we want to get it right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I think we need a hand care.
Okay, let's.
Or just go down.
Roll call? Okay, roll call.
Aye.
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 Abstain? Is that, can't, no?
You have to say aye, yes or no.
Really?
When you're at the board table, you have to say yes or no.
Oh, do I need to leave the board table?
You have to leave the board meeting completely if you wanted to abstain. So if you're at the board table, you have to vote.
If you were given a ruling from the judge, if you have a conflict of interest.
A conflict of interest or not being present.
Okay. Um, I guess I don't really care either way, but, so, yeah, I guess yes. Yay. Kind of neutral.
So, a majority is, so it will be moved to a four-year term. Thank you. Motion carried six one. Recommended motion to approve the revision to policy 167.3 public participation at board meetings as submitted by trustee Heineck. Somebody make a motion?
Motion. Nope.
Second.
Okay, would you like to?
At our last meeting, we discussed one change, basically for the first 30 minutes of public comment to be only about agenda items, and the next period of public comment would cover anything, any topic that people would be interested in explaining to the board. We did modify the statement that said you must turn in your form as you come to the meeting to say it must be up here before that particular public comment period starts. So, when the presiding officer starts the first comment period, we'll have a stack and then a stack that would start before the second comment period. I think those were the changes we talked about at the discussion last time.
Any comments from others?
Question.
Yes.
Does that need to go back to the Board Policy Committee?
No. Because we talked about it at the last board meeting, as a committee of the whole, that's where we, that was the first conversation with the board policy and trying to bring those conversations that would be at the Board Policy Committee to the full board. And so if we have those discussions as a full board, we do not have to put them back to the Policy Committee. Unless we decide that we want to push something back for more discussion from the Policy Committee.
And if you pushed it back, would it then have to come to the board for more discussion again and then could go back and forth for?
Right.
Ever.
Yep.
I had a few. So, the first thing I would say is it's not my intent in any vote to squelch public comment or public opinion or any time that the public would like to bring anything to the board table, compliments or concerns. So, one thing I would like to have go back to the Policy Committee is on B, anyone with concerns. I would like that language a little less harsh for our future consideration, because a lot of times folks come and their public comment is to talk about a program that's going well in the schools or organs. So it's something that we might want to consider in the future. On C, I believe it talks about group affiliation, attendees must register their intention before public portion begins. Group affiliation, we're still defining as are you a Saline Area Schools district resident or student or things like that, correct? As far as, as opposed to like a third-party group, or it includes both?
No, affiliation is a third-party group. On the form, it has affiliation to Saline Area Schools, which is different.
Okay, I just, I like it. I want to make sure we keep that. I think it's important when anyone is addressing, particularly with requests for a change, that we know if they're a voter or a parent in our district versus a third party group, I think that's important information. I also wanted to make sure that we were prioritizing students first as an option if they would like to do public comment before adults.
If they identify themselves as a student on the form, then we can do that, but if they're just submitting, then they'll go in order in which they're submitted.
Okay. And then my last question was, the public comments, I know we didn't have a student showcase portion tonight, which I think is great, sometimes even if limiting public comment the first round to agenda items of 30 minutes, sometimes that could take the whole 30 minutes. Would you be having student showcase happen before public comment so students have the opportunity to go personal if they, if they don't wish to sit through the public comment?
Student showcase always comes to mind.
Okay, I wanted to make sure, because I remember during one of the past presentations that a lot of students, a lot of community students were here for a lot of different comments that perhaps those parents would have wanted to know about.
That's because they were part of the agenda, not part of the student showcase.
It is though, to the extent that we, that the public comment, non-agenda related items prior to meeting are in a window, it does allow for scheduled portions often including students.
Yeah.
So it just, it flows better.
Yeah, I just want to be cognizant a little bit of that 30 minute upfront with the age of students. Something that I wanted to bring up. The other idea, Paul, you quoted this and I've read a article on this and I really, really liked the idea of special sessions. Sometimes, so sometimes public comment, depending on what's going on in the community or in the world, we could get a lot of public comment and I did really like the idea of special sessions. And maybe we can talk with Katie about that, where we host a night and there's a portion of the board or whatever, a special topic. I thought that was a really good idea.
The official MASB Open Meeting Act, method to obtain public comment is to hold public forums. I mean, that's recommended. We got into trouble, we got in trouble many years ago when we were having a policy change and there started to be a lot of two-way dialogue. Got a little heated and so, I mean, the rules of public forum are the same as public comments. You listen.
Right, exactly.
But it's a good way to meet public and get their input.
And I don't know if it's been done on this board in the past, but I know it wasn't done in 2019 and that would be something I'd like to see, whether it's for open topic or a specific thing. I could think of times in the past, like bond issue or other things where that would have been a period of doubt.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Jennifer kind of hit on some of the things I was wondering about, like students and stuff, so.
Students.
All those in favor of, get to the right page, approving the revision to policy 167.3? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same? Motion carried seven zero. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve PCO number 450 credit in the amount of $74,892.44 and the PCO number 44A payment in the amount of $24,310.10 from Clark Construction as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Ossley?
So move.
I'll jump in on this. The, just, no, this is somewhat of a wrap of the bond work that was done relative to the last summer. A couple of things, one is on the real positive side, some of the, a significant percentage of the contingency funds are being returned to the district in the neighborhood of $75,000. And in fact, the, our fee, because of our cost savings dropped below the amount to essentially our fees on what we did do was slightly higher because we did, we were able to save dollars. So the net, the net for us was about $50,000 credit to the district relative to the work that was done last year. The one outstanding item remains our track. Our tracks, the product that has been applied to our tracks, the use of bubbles, it's creating issue and ultimately because of the type of contract we have, we do not have a contract with the track installers. We have a contract with Clark. Clark is in litigation with the manufacturer of the product surface and the installers of the product surface. We're going to work through that. The reality is regardless of who's at fault, it's impacting our ability to use our track for the coming year. So we're working through that. We expect a very high-quality track, a surface that's consistent with some of the highest level Olympic and NCAA tracks. And it's not performing the way we want and we are not going to be in a position, we're going to pay for that system until we have it rectified and we have the solution rectified. So I would anticipate that unfortunately for the spring, it's going to have an impact on our competition practice on it, but so, because of the bubbling, but that we are committed to getting the, what we paid for. I should say what we are set to pay for.
Right.
We literally have not paid for it yet, nor do we intend to until we have a rectified situation. So other than that, we are putting $50,000 back into our bond, our bond from last year and moving forward. Appreciate Clark.
So our students will practice. Is there a safety issue?
No, so essentially what is happening, and it's not happening right now, but it could happen, is temperatures increasing, if there's some bubbling. And so the concern would be is if there's a bubble during a competition, it could impact the competitive nature of the track. If there's some bubbling during a practice, literally you'll lance the bubble, compress the spot and continue to practice. It doesn't necessarily impact the ability to use the track. We would not want to do that scenario in a competition. No, we want there to be a bubble that were developed and would not be seen by track officials compete and have a student athlete somehow have an impact associated with that.
So it's not just the whole track, it's not just a section?
No, it's not, it's not just a section. We've noted it's about 30, initially it was about 30 spots that, till we noticed that. And again, if you were considering, we put a new asphalt surface in, they laid a spray surface on top of that. It's an incurable surface and so because of that, it has more buoyancy, it is a better competition track. The tracks that are semi-permeable allow for some drainage and some air to get through and I think that, so it's a higher, there's a higher level of sensitivity with the type of track that we want to have for our student athletes, but it's a little volatile and I'm understanding is a not, a non-acceptable level of volatility associated with that track.
I don't want to dwell too much on bubbles, but are these like fist size or hubcap size?
I've seen some that are hubcap size, one that was slightly higher, a lot are the size of a, you know, a football.
So it's more like a delamination sort of?
Yeah, you would, essentially the rubberized surface separates from the asphalt surface or there's air underneath that. Again, I don't want to act like, these aren't.
It's not like a bubble.
No, yeah, it was a bubble, they're raised and but you're competing on it, you know, it's an inch, and it's certainly not what it's made for. We're talking about literally a surface combined with the asphalt that is in the neighborhood of a half a billion dollars. And we expect this track to not only perform well, we expect it to perform well for a long period of time, and we're going to continue working with the manufacturer to make it right.
Heidi?
Yes.
Haven't had a comment?
Yes.
Yeah, on the track bubbling specifically, I know, I think it was last October, the cross-country team went out there and walked the track to find all of these. Since that time, has there been like more bubbles that have appeared or is that just the ones that were found?
We've noted with the company, the ones that have appeared, we haven't seen more, more appear really since in early December. Now, I don't know, we've been out there the last month, but by early December, they were not appearing and we felt that that was a function. In fact, some of the ones that had appeared and thankfully the team had found have actually gone down because of the, likely because of temperatures. And so there is a reality that had, had we not found these initially and had paid to build, we would be in a very different situation. And so I do applaud the department out there taking a look at the track. I think it's still on at 30.
So Clark, is it the way they apply the surface that's causing issue or just swamp gas and?
Well, it depends on who you ask. And I will say, I've been in a couple of those meetings and we used to have a car manufacturer term, we would call it, but it was, it's a finger pointing process in terms of determining who is responsible for performance of the track, who is responsible for the determination that the asphalt surface is ready. And so not to get into the science of it, but you know, concrete cures, asphalt has a process of off-gassing. And so there was a 28-day specified wait period between the laying of the asphalt and the intended application. The manufacturer of the surface benon was, had, was responsible to determine if the asphalt was ready for their product. They put their product down, therefore by definition or by process indicating that the asphalt surface was ready. They have indicated that they feel the asphalt surface is the cause of the thing, meaning it's off-gassing more than what is fact. We went through and Clark and the folks we had monitoring the system, literally have tickets from each of the asphalt aggregate specs associated with it. They were testing that surface as it was laying. The aggregate that was laying was consistent with the specified aggregate. It appears as though whether, if that is somehow off-gassing more than it should or I think that the manufacturer that put the surface on failed to determine that it was not ready for application. And so once they applied the surface, they're responsible for the performance of the surface. And so that really becomes where you, like one in organization feels like, hey, this surface wasn't ready. Our position and the position of Clark who holds contract with manufacturers, regardless of whether or not the surface is ready, they were trying to determine whether, by contract, whether or not the surface is ready.
While it's not what we contracted for, has anyone approved it for use? As in, in its current state?
In its current state, Clark has said it can be used or used, it becomes, won't be for competition based on, it's sort of older competition.
But they say people do, they've approved it for use.
Yes. The challenges with the surface are, I would say, competitive performance based versus inoperability. Regardless of whose, it's unfortunate for all of us, both the manufacturer, the asphalt folks, Doc Clark, secondary schools, ultimately their student athletes and families. It's very unfortunate.
Okay. All those in favor of this recommended motion? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same? Motion carried seven zero. Okay. Consent agenda, the following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that one, that any one or all be considered individually. Recommended motion, move to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda. A, approval of the regular board of education meeting minutes of December 10th, 2019. Approval of payment of the general fund accounts payable of January 14th, 2020 in the amount Approval of payment of bond fund series two accounts payable of January 14th, 2020 in the amount of $359,519.41. Receive and file January's curriculum, finance and human resources report. Receive and file employment contracts for the assistant superintendents of curriculum, finance and human resources as submitted by superintendent Grayden. Approval of the early graduation request is submitted by superintendent Grayden. Approval of the following field trips is submitted by superintendent Grayden. Field trip number 79, model United Nations conference in East Lansing, Michigan on March 13th through the 15th of 2020. Field trip number 80, Secondary Schools Writing Center Association Conference in Washington, DC, March 12th through the 15th, 2020. And field trip number 84, lead student council leadership conference in Washington, DC on January 31st to February 2nd, 2020.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carried seven zero. Okay. Items scheduled on the next agenda. There will also be a board retreat where no action will be taken between now and the next meeting. Now is the second time for public comment, same rules apply as the first public comment. And the first one is easy and, I'm sorry, I'm slaughtering your name.
Well, hello everyone. I'm Lexi Ramirez and I came up here just to thank everybody. So SCTN, if you guys don't have Channel 18, well, if you live in the city and you have Channel 18, make sure to turn that on. That would help me out a ton. And if not, you can go on YouTube, check out Salim Video, where you actually upload all the videos to Salim Video. And this last month, Lexi, who is the assistant manager there at the station tonight, decided to do a little sock drive for Salim Area Social Services. So I wanted to thank everybody, including all the students that donated, all the people that donated, and including Walmart, who donated a huge amount of socks, underwear, shirts. We were hoping to have just one full box and by the whole time that we were done, we had like six full boxes. So I just literally wanted to thank everybody who participated and donated some socks. So, thank you.
Tiffany Alexander and Lisa Slossum. Pardon? Okay. Jessica Navin.
Good evening and I appreciate your patience. Thank you. I hadn't planned on speaking, but I wanted to thank you for the change we've made to the public comment. I think that you guys put some decent time into that. Good changes. I don't, I think it's important for work to be able to get done, people get here, you talk about what's on the agenda and then we can kind of throw some ideas out there at the end for you. So I think that's good. So thank you for that. I want to thank you for on the website adding the minutes and the agendas. So we can see, like tonight, we were able to see what the changes actually were so we could reference those, so I appreciate that, thank you. Some things I would like to address is the, I'm just going to throw these out there and you guys can, you know, deal with it what you want, but the, I know that there was a very interesting post, tweet this weekend that went around, upsetting about the whites pharmacy comment. I know that was upsetting to a lot of people. So that's unfortunate and that that came from a high school teacher teaching our children. So that's, that's a real shame. The display, this is in middle school. I think that it is important to include, yes, all means all, or, hold on, let me get my photos. Let's see. It is the, yeah, all means, is it all means all or something like that? In any case, my, one of my concerns is that there is, well, a lot of concerns, but there's a map and on that map, it actually says criminalization of consensual same-sex sexual acts between adults. That's in our middle school and I understand that everyone learns about sex, sexual acts at different times, but I thought that was a little alarming because I think we're trying to say the whole LGBTQ thing is not a sexual thing, but we're talking about sexual acts. There's a map about it, so that was a little alarming, so if people could kind of look into that, that would be great. And also, oh, I didn't see that.
Yeah, the yellow one, you were looking down, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
All right, thank you.
Now Tiffany and Lisa.
Hello, Dan. We're not representing anybody but two friends. So this weekend, as Miss Navin referred to, there was a post in the Salim Post and it referred to a teacher at the high school. And I wanted to say about that, that also, that post also garnered over a thousand comments and a huge portion of those were absolutely disgusting and despicable. And so I want to encourage you, all of you, to join us in saying to the people that run Salim Post, hate speech isn't protected by the First Amendment. It never has, it never will be. And if you want to barbecue a teacher on Salim Post without having And if you want to barbecue a teacher on Celine Post without having his, you know, information about what happened in the full tweet, that's wrong. We don't do that to our teachers. Anybody wonder why there's a shortage of teachers? Because you might have to have that happen to you. How embarrassing, how embarrassing. So go to the principal, and then go, if you don't get what you want from there, go to Mr. Grayden and Mr. Watch. But putting a teacher out there for public consumption and a thousand-plus comments that include hate speech about that person is wrong. And we need you to also say to those people, stop that. With you, there's a process for you to gripe about teachers. And I also am very concerned about this community and the hatred that I'm seeing. Gay people are here, black people are here, everybody's here. And talking about the LGBTQ community like there's something wrong with them, people, it's twenty-twenty, just get over it. So, to you.
Okay, so I, I also want to comment on that, and there's some thoughts I'd like to connect. First of all, I was one of the people that this hate speech was directed towards.
There you go.
I was really told that I was jealous, and that wanting history to be taught, and I was jealous, and that I should work harder, because I'm lazy to get what other people, specifically white people, have. First of all, I'm also white, my mother's Russian and Jewish, making me Russian and Jewish. My husband, who's just right there, is also white, okay? I'm not lazy, I'm educated, and I love my life, I'm very grateful for it. So the people supporting that comment and supporting, giving, you know, having a problem with, with, with what this particular teacher is doing are the same ones who liked that comment and made those comments. And I want to bring that to note, that these are the same people who support having issues with LGBTQ+ community. There is a reason for that. Again, it is a facade, that we don't have a problem with black people, we don't really have a problem with trans people, yes, they do. Thank you.
And we will be having a closed session in ten minutes, which would be seven fifty-two. There will be no action taken at that, but we will be talking about.
And there could be action at the.
Oh, there could be action at the meeting. Oops, sorry.
Relative to, to employee contracts.
Relative to employee contracts, and if so, we will return to open session for that. Would like to have a recommendation to enter closed session to the Board of Education with intent to re, with the intent to reopen open session at, I already said it.
Oh, gotcha, sorry about that.
Five forty, about five fifteen.
No, you're jumping again. We're messing her up.
Anyway, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those in favor?
Do you recall those?
Oh geez.
We don't have to.
No, this one, this one specifically does not require a roll call.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
It's under eight.
Every reason to go into open session has a different requirement, some is two-thirds, some is second.
Okay, so Michael is going to make the motion.
I'll support.
We'll get this right eventually, people.
Those who are still here, I just want to compliment Superintendent Grayden, we, we noticed that this great book, Open Meetings Guide, that our, our trustee F. Estepad, and it was marked up and had like four hundred tabs and highlights.
And I'm like.
I asked Superintendent Grayden, and he said, forget one, give one to everybody. So we have our homework, we're going to be open meeting log.
As soon as I got it, I, I read it front to back, I was highlighting and.
He's such a supportive superintendent.
All those in favor? Sorry, all those in favor, aye.
Seven zero.